All right, so now we will convene the Mesa City Council Study Session for June 6, 2024. Again, we'll begin with a roll call. The mayor is absent in excuse and council members go forth and Summers are joining via Zoom. All other members are present. Item number one is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, June 17 meeting. We can go through the agenda and I don't know, Mr. Brady, I think we have various different presentations here.
Yeah, we already have a few of the items already scheduled for the study session. So regarding the visit Mesa agreement as well as the Capitol Campaign donor naming rights by ID Museum, so we can, we'll have those presentations, but if there's anything else the council would like to hear from the staff, we'll entertain those.
All right, is there any other items before we start the presentations that council members have any questions on? All right.
Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Summers.
I think it would be good policy to get a presentation from staff on the Burge Development Agreement.
All right. We have Mr. Hirschberg.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. I know Monday you discussed the zoning, rezoning for this project and this site. This is kind of a follow-up from the April meeting where we discussed this as the notice of the DA agreement. So moving forward, again, the location of this proposed project is south of Williamsfield, just north of the 24 on both sides of Signal Butte, the east and the west. That yellow hashed area is a future potential annexation area currently in the county, but could potentially be a part of this project. Some of the big picture deals points of this development agreement is designed to address limited reimbursement for public infrastructure, mainly focused on Signal Butte and Williamsfield, and then the use restriction and design elements to facilitate the quality and compatibility that we're looking for in a project of this nature. The reimbursement is eligible for the public infrastructure only and goes to the developer, not individual dealerships. So for a total of 14.4 million if they complete the following requirements. All of the public infrastructure needs to be completed and dedicated to the city by April 1 of '28, right-of-way dedications at that same time, and the first new car dealership has to be operating and open for business to the public by July 1 of '29. The infrastructure that's eligible for reimbursement, you can see on the picture there are those sections highlighted in green, that includes pavement, curb, gutter sidewalks, storm drainage, streetlights, traffic signals, the utilities, the sewer and water in particular. Same would hold true if that potential property is annexed into the city at a later date. Those same elements would be eligible for public reimbursement and are included in that 14.4. The limitations on the reimbursement, the city's total sales tax rate is 2%. They would only be eligible for 50% of the 1.2 non-dedicated general fund sales tax received by the city. So those funds, those tax funds dedicated for street maintenance, quality of life and public safety are not eligible as part of the reimbursement. If a motorcycle dealership were to open, that tax can only be reimbursed after two new car dealerships are open for business to the public. Again, that reimbursement is capped at a total of 14.4 million and will only cover the actual costs of the improvements constructed and dedicated to the city to meet those requirements of this DA. The incentive period is for a total of 12 years and begins when the first new car dealership opens, so hopefully prior to or by that July 1, 2029 date. And then it can be extended up to three times for a period of three years per an extension of each new car dealership for a maximum of 21 years. Some of the use restrictions that we've placed on it, again, a minimum of 60% commercial, 40% multiple residence, and it's restricted on specific locations of the site. The use restrictions, auto service, repair shops are allowed to be associated with the dealership but are limited or prohibited with outside of when it becomes a principal use, can only have one gas service station, no car washes unless it's allowed with the, associated with the dealership itself, a maximum of five standalone food and beverage drive-throughs, and then no mini storage. The design elements, these were items that Councilmember Summers of specifically working with his constituents asked us to work on getting into the DA and working with the developer. They have to submit a, any site plan. So one of the things I've learned going through this deal is the manufacturer of the place is pretty strict restrictions on what the building looks like, the design elements, everything else. So working with them on what elements they can control at the local level, they have to submit comprehensive design guidelines for each, each time a new project or new site comes through as they're developing that. The city, that is, will, that design elements will be subject to review, but not just by DRB, but also has to be approved by the planning director. We've, noise was a big concern for that Councilmember Summers had heard from his constituents, so we have worked to make sure that, that the use of public address systems, PA systems throughout those dealerships is limited at the residential property line and restricted. And then lighting, shielding on lighting that emits at, anything at 150 wattage equivalent, which is 23 LED watts, has to be fully shielded at the dealerships to prevent that light pollution. That, happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I have some questions.
Councilmember Summers and then Councilmember.
Yeah, it would have been great to eliminate all the drive-throughs, but how many did we reduce from the prior agreement? I think it's important for folks to understand that there was a previous agreement in place, the zoning was in place, this is a new development agreement to replace the old one. So what, how many did we reduce on that to try to increase the quality of dining options?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers, the 2018 development agreement had no limitations on drive-throughs and they were permitted by right to construct as many as they wanted to at that point. So we came back with the reamended DA and as that site grew in acreage and capped it at a total of five.
And then the, for the public improvement, we're talking roads, through intersections, those are already under construction, is that correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers, I'm gonna pause for one second and I'll answer that, but Jim wanted to add one more thing on.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Summers, on the use restrictions, I think for the public, it's not just that the drive-throughs on the previous development agreement had no limitations. All those limitations on use restrictions, except the 16, 40%, those, the 16, 40% was in the prior development agreement. All the other restrictions that you saw in that PowerPoint did not, were not in the prior development agreement. So there's a number of restrictions that are new in this development agreement to help facilitate compatibility and quality. And also, as you know, the other additional requirements regarding lighting and the design guidelines, those are all also new. Also clarify, just one sort of tweak of what Mark said on the car washes. Car washes have, are not allowed unless, as a principal use, but they're allowed if there is a secondary use, so they're allowed with a car dealership, or you can think like a Costco with a car, with a car wash, you would be allowed to have that. So it's, no principal use car washes are allowed. So that's another, you know, restriction that was not in the prior development agreement, the mini storages, that whole list. And the list is actually much longer in the development agreement, we only gave you sort of the highlights on that bullet point. So all those, all those are new.
Yeah, I'm quite pleased with the, the presentation that was given. And the uses you're discussing are necessary for part of car dealerships too, right? When anybody that takes their vehicle in for maintenance knows that they're gonna do some maintenance there, they're gonna clean your car for you if they're a really good dealership, so having those uses is important. To the point on the, the road construction that is currently ongoing, is it true that Burge is largely responsible for, for doing that construction ongoing?
That is correct, Councilmember Summers. That work is currently underway on Williamsfield in particular, and Burge is responsible for that and, and will not be reimbursed unless they meet the requirements of the DA.
Yeah, well, I commend Burge for doing that. I know there's an existing development agreement in place, but it, in order to expand this project and make it better, there was a little bit of a leap of faith there. So I want to just say to the Burge folks that thank you very much for doing that. It's a, it's an important project in the area for, for safety and, by the way, how's that going? We had a little bit of hiccup on that one. Are they progressing?
They are progressing.
Excellent. I haven't heard anything about it lately, so that's good. The only thing I would add to this, and it's just a general comment for all the staff, as this becomes a successful commercial area, we're gonna see clearly an increase in traffic in the area. There are some traffic flow concerns in the general area, for example, there are some intersection concerns at Signal Butte and Eastmark Boulevard. So as we move forward with other CIP or other projects, I'd like to look at how the impact of traffic for this commercial development over the coming years is going to require some infrastructure improvements that are not directly related to the site but are important for public safety. Other than that, thank you for the presentation.
All right, we have Councilmember Duff.
Yes, could you remind me, now the 14.4 million reimbursement, is that considered to be the entire cost of the infrastructure improvements or just a portion?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, those are only the public infrastructure improvements. There's much more infrastructure that they need to install for their site to be successful.
Represent 100% anticipated cost for the public infrastructure?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One clarification, there's more if you show that map. They have other, it's for the public infrastructure on which we're willing to reimburse. You see, there's other roadways.
They're building a lot more than that.
They're building more.
That's not everything they have to do.
Yeah.
That's just the part we related to the car dealerships.
That's 100%.
Yeah. So Vice Mayor and Council, let me just, you know, these projects take a long time. I know we had that kind of discussion. We talked about back in 2018, and it started even before then, before we even had a car dealership show up, we were, when we identified this intersection many years ago, over 10 years ago, as being a significant opportunity for the city, probably the last opportunity for a car, new car dealership in Mesa. And when you look at the maps where we collect the highest concentration of sales tax, by and far is gonna be car sales. And when the lifeblood of the city is sales tax, these projects are very important. So we don't typically do these kind of incentive programs, right? But what's, what's really what makes this project work is all that reimbursement, it's a reimbursement, they actually have to collect, they have to create the tax first, right? They have to actually sell the cars that generates the tax before it can be reimbursed. And so they're highly motivated in this agreement is where we built it in, is while they have extensions, it's actually more to their benefit, because they're gonna have to do all these improvements on the front end. And so they're gonna be motivated to get those costs reimbursed back to their own pocketbook. And so there is a high motivation for them to build out these dealerships as well as to sell as many cars as possible. Then ultimately, we believe that, you know, in a quick, in a fairly short period of time, if they're actively doing this, you can kind of see this on the chart, thanks for putting this one up, the return back to the city becomes pretty significant, even after we've allowed them to reimburse for these public improvements. Again, they're public improvements, so the, the public will benefit from all this. And I, and so I do want to thank, first of all, the Horn and Burge families for making this significant investment in Mesa. These are longtime Mesa businesses, they've been part of Mesa's economy and significant contributors for many, many years, and their families continue to pass down this legacy of what they do. So first of all, we want to thank them and for their patience and helping us work through this. I want to thank our city staff. These are not, it's kind of like when we bring these to council, it's like, oh, okay, but there's a lot of work going back and forth. There's a lot of complexities to these public improvements we're facing. This is more than just simply streets and utility infrastructure, there's drainage, there's a lot of other things going on. So I appreciate everybody kind of bringing this together after many, many months and years, but I think we've come up with a pretty good agreement that balances out the concern about the surrounding other areas residents, but this really, Signal Butte and the 24, hopefully in the next, whatever, six to eight years, will become one of the most significant revenue generator for the city of Mesa. So we, we want to endorse this project going forward, so thank you.
Councilmember Duff and Councilmember Freeman.
And I think a significant point also is only 50% reimbursement at a time. So of the 1.2% sales tax, because the other is dedicated, right, only 50% is going at a time. So we're retaining some sales tax for our general operating and then the half of that. So it's not like 100% of their tax revenue that's allowed is going, is only 50%. So we're getting half of it for our city operations and they're going half for their reimbursement. So it does take a time to do that, so I think that's really important too.
And just, well, I think we should say it again, it doesn't affect the transportation sales tax or the public safety sales tax. Matter of fact, they're gonna benefit greatly from this.
Yeah.
Councilmember Freeman.
You know, I just want to add that this is a very complex DA, I think, Mr. Smith, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
And kudos to staff and especially, you know, as I look at 2018, when we first kind of massaged this and how it's progressed today, it's been very beneficial not only to the city, but then the neighborhood input and areas is very essential to the success of this development. And so the reimbursement, as I look at the map here that you put up, is, is critical and highlighting all the different areas that we would reimburse for, I think is essential. And then to Mr. Brady's point, thank you to the Horn and Burge family for staying in Mesa and being part of it, because they're foundational families in our community and always have been for generations, so appreciate that. So that'd be my comment, is thank you for moving forward and let's build a new dealerships and a motorcycle dealership, I guess.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Vice Mayor, I do, I have a question.
You wanna go first?
So presumably because this may go into 20 years, there will be maintenance costs to those public spaces, right, public infrastructure along the way probably. So, and because they're not sharing in that transportation sales tax, will that, and 50%, I presume those will be used for the maintenance costs. We are generating sales tax to cover those costs.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't, aside specifically for that, but just like any public utility infrastructure that's dedicated back to the city, we are responsible for the maintenance of it. I don't want to say, I mean, it gets all blended together, it's, it's not set aside specifically from the sales tax from this dealership, but yes, over the next forever, 20 years, we will be responsible, the city is responsible for the maintenance of the streets, of the infrastructure. We, they have to build them initially to our standards and then they dedicate them back to the city.
Is that the sales tax for transportation?
It is, but I mean, I don't want to miss say we're setting aside specifically for the, I just be careful, but yes, I mean, if.
True, I know, we don't set aside.
Yeah, we're responsible for it, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it's important that, you know, we do, that we do emphasize that those, we will be able to cover that maintenance. I know it may not be, you know, exactly with those, the, the transportation tax collected, but we're not giving that up.
Right.
And then I had one question about the acreage that, that is allowable for five drive-throughs. What is that acreage? Can you tell me, Mark?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. It's the entire site, which I believe is roughly 140 acres?
It's 155 with the county property, I believe, 155 once they annex in that county portion.
And so on that 155 acres, that's the, that's the total allowable space for the five drive-throughs?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. One other question, Mark, the 24, I know it's contingent on the improvements on the 24 as it extends out, does it align as far as the timeline that we're looking at? I think we asked in the previous meetings, but can't remember.
479, does the flyovers, you're talking about the flyovers, the?
No, no, the, the State Route 24, if, I know we need a, it needs to be, you know, the off-ramps and on-ramps.
Right, yeah. Do we know how that's scheduled?
Yeah, good, good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. If Prop 479 were to pass this November, the extension of State Route 24, Phase 2 of State Route 24 is a Phase 1 project within the plan, which means it would happen within the first five years. That being said, it's really ready for construction, they've been working on design and other elements already, MAG has, so we, and ADOT have, so we believe that it would happen very early in that, in that timeline.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just a concern, as a frequent traveler to that part of the city nearby at the sports complex, it does get congested in that area, especially during high-peak travel, so.
Yeah, it doesn't help that you have to stop at that intersection.
Sure, sure.
You're right.
So I think that's, that's good news and folks should notice, you know, the, with the extension, we definitely need to pay attention with those types of improvements that we need to, need to do in the future, so. All right, any other questions on that item? No, we'll move forward. Any other, I know Councilmember Duff had additional questions on other items not listed on the, as presentations, right?
Item 5D, just a quick explanation on that, I think is a great opportunity for the Mesa Historical Museum to gain some revenue from a sublease. Is the land adjacent to the historical museum? I assume the city owns it? And, I don't know, just a little bit of clarification on what that is.
We have Candace.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. Yes, this is a property that is just adjacent to the Mesa Historical Museum. It is owned by the City of Mesa during a, it was a land swap with Mesa Public Schools way back in the day. It has been under a 30-year lease to Mesa Historical Society since then, it's up this month for 30 years. During that time, they have subleased it to a charter school, and we've allowed them to sublease it and then use the revenues from that sublease for the operations of the museum that is adjacent to it.
So this is an extension of an existing agreement?
Right, the existing agreement is up this month, so this would be a new agreement for a 20-year lease.
Okay.
But it's continuing the same.
All right, so it's nothing new.
It's the same situation, and although we'll be writing in the ability for them to sublease to the charter school into the actual lease agreement, where before it was an amendment to the agreement that we had to keep approving.
Okay, great, thank you for that explanation, I didn't realize that. And my last question is fairly simple, is item 6C and the planning. So I watched the planning and zoning meeting on this, and this is the Dave Downing Associates' warehouse on South Hibbert. I was just curious, at this point in time, the planning and zoning meeting was on May 22nd, and there was a neighboring business that came forward and had some concerns about shared access of a driveway, I guess, to access his property, as well as some electrical issues. I didn't know if there's an update, any of that has been resolved or is it still outstanding?
Vice Mayor Heredia, Councilmember Duff, so there isn't any updates on that as, as to the electrical portion of it, but we do have a cross-access agreement between those two properties, so there is no wall. There was a question about whether there was gonna be a wall proposed along that south property line, which is where they share, share common access. So there is no wall proposed, they have a cross-access agreement, and that did seem to satisfy the neighbors' questions at the planning and zoning hearing, that they would maintain that access into their property.
Okay, I'll look at a little closer, I was thinking it was more at the gate area that he was concerned about?
They do have a gate, so there's an existing gate between the two properties right now, they're replacing it with just a different, a new gate, but there, there is an existing gate there already, they're just replacing that.
So the neighboring business isn't being restricted?
No, they are not.
Okay, all right, and then the electric issues, we don't know?
Don't, don't have any updates on that?
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on additional items on the agenda, not on the, on the agenda here for study session?
Councilmember Freeman?
I do, I have a question on 4A on the Axon body cameras. Do we have police here to help?
Yes.
Kind of expand, spending $5.5 million and why we're doing that, chief?
Oh my gosh, they're so expensive. Oh my gosh, I had no idea those things were so expensive.
Give us an overview and high-level overview of that and purpose of it. Thank you.
Morning, Vice Mayor. Members of council, I have here with me our Deputy Director, Pat Phelps, and I just kind of want to give you an overview of the why. And the primary reason is currently we're in, ready to approve the third year of our current five-year contract with Axon, and they presented a new technology that I think has the potential to be a game changer for our officers in the field, and that's the introduction of Taser 10, which I'll describe in just a moment. This new five-year agreement secures pricing over the next five years. We're finding that prices are increasing year over year by 15% or more. It also incorporates multiple independent agreements into one. We have multiple products that Axon provides for us, from body-worn cameras, the Taser platform, evidence.com, which is video storage, as well as our interview rooms and multiple other areas. This does provide new body-worn cameras, which is our fourth version. I think what's important for this is it does allow the potential for live streaming of video into the real-time crime center as things are occurring, so in the event we had a significant incident in the city, we could livestream the video of what our officers are seeing, both in the real-time crime and into our tactical command center. The unlimited cloud storage for third-party digital evidence is important to us, because as we bring in not only CCTV coverage or evidence that's recovered in investigations, our county attorney requires us to provide that digital evidence through our evidence.com portal. So this would allow us to upload that evidence and make it easier to transport that digital evidence to the prosecuting agency that we work with. It also includes our Axon Community Request Portion, which will allow citizens to submit digital evidence directly to evidence.com, improve software for managing the body-worn camera, and three technical account managers for the next two years, which primarily will help us deal with the public records backlog for our redaction of body-worn camera videos. Currently, the model of Taser that we use is the Taser 7. When we went to the Taser 7 from the last version, we improved with a effective rate of about 72%. So currently, right now, close to 30% of the time that our officers actually use a Taser, it's ineffective. Primarily that's due to the platform that it's currently using. And to describe it, you have a cartridge that is attached to the end of this Taser and it, when you actually utilize it, two darts actually exit that device, one directly at the individual target and one that's actually at a slight angle, which really limits the distance that they're effective. Taser says they're effective up to 25 feet, however, we have seen that it's really only effective between 11 to 15 feet. And you can see on this graph some of the reasons why it's not effective. For one, 38% of those misses, it's because we missed the target. There's a limited probe spread, which means this, you have to have a spread in the probe to actually make that tool effective. Either loose or thick clothing, or the probe's not able to penetrate and/or that probe is pulled free when the individual is struggling with their officers. So this Taser 10 does provide 10 individual cartridges with enhanced accuracy. So this TASER 10 does provide 10 individual cartridges with enhanced accuracy. It's one single trigger that fires one projectile at a time, and it does have an enhanced penetration, which we believe will be a game changer. This device has an effective rate of 45 feet, and it creates more time and space to de-escalate some of these conflicts that our officers face with. That is significant for us, and we do believe, and we've seen some, from some of our fellow agencies that have used this, this has made a significant difference in their use of force incidents that would have potentially led to an officer-involved shooting. In this particular case, when the current TASER fails, it's of no use to our officers. It now becomes really useless. This provides 10 opportunities to actually make that tool effective. We did test this at our own facility, and at 45 feet, we had a very accurate spread of those 10 darts. Just for perspective, 45 feet is about the length of three vehicles. And as we train our officers to try to have more distance time to allow for de-escalation techniques to be effective, this is actually, falls right into what we're asking for officers to do. And if you can imagine, if we're dealing with someone who's a danger to themselves, potentially armed, that distance provides an opportunity for us to potentially take them into custody without any force being used other than this particular tool. This is just a perspective in real time. You can see the distance that our officers will be able to maintain. In meeting with one of our local agencies, they did see an increase in the use of TASER overall, simply because it was more effective, instead of having to resort to other tools that are in their arsenal, including lethal force. One additional item in here that we found of interest is this particular tool allows us to track every time a TASER is actually removed from its holster and either elevated to a point that it may be pointed at an individual, and that actually is downloaded right into our computer programs that interfaces with our training folks. So in a nutshell, that is the primary driver for this in the middle of this contract to get us out to the next five years and really to allow us to integrate this TASER 10 into our protocol. We currently have 809 units that we will be replacing and putting out into the field.
Mr. Freeman?
Well, thank you, because I think incorporating technology, especially our real-time crime center, with these Axon, the new ones, is essential for not only the safety, but for recording what happened on the scene. One thing that impressed me is when, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if a TASER is pulled from the holster, other Axon cameras come on on the other officers? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the video is seen from different angles of what is happening on the incident?
Correct, and the challenge is if our officers are faced with like an emergency-critical situation, we're asking them to physically turn those cameras on. It does become habit, but in the event that they're not able to, because of what they're dealing with, it automatically turns on those cameras for us, so we have that video available.
Well, having the additional 10, I guess shots or TASER shots towards the individual is crucial to the safety, not only officer, but potentially for the individual involved as well.
That's correct.
Thank you, I just, I thought that was an important thing that we highlighted.
Councilmember Spilsbury?
The sensor tracking or reporting thing was interesting to me. Do we have anything like that on our guns?
Councilmember Spilsbury, we do not. There is technology that's emerging across the country that we see in some of our vendor expos, you know, at our major conferences. It is quite expensive at this point because it would require replacing all the equipment that our officers currently carry, i.e. their holster. But it is something that we look at, and when it does become, I think, more reasonable, we'll be looking into that, that technology.
Like maybe something you attach to the gun, not, like you wouldn't have to replace the gun itself necessarily?
No, you would not. It's primarily the holster, and there's a sensor that's attached to the firearm.
Okay, I thought that was an interesting thing to add to. All the great things you guys are already doing, but, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Duff?
Or, perfect. I do have a question, Chief, on two items on the unlimited data storage. Is there any conversations from Axon and us to improve on the searchability and the ability to provide on the, when we do get requests for those videos to improve that, those, that search or that capture? Because it does, it does have a long wait period right now. And I've been told that it's because of the lack of just technology of how do we, how we can search on these unlimited storage from, access from Axon. So is there any leverage point based on these contract extensions to have those conversations with Axon to improve their systems, to be able for us to improve our backlog of requests on public records requests, right?
You know, Vice Mayor, the best way I can answer that question is the technology's just not there yet. They do offer some technology. It just does not meet our needs, particularly with redaction. Unfortunately, we just don't have the ability to press a button to redact some of the personal identifying information, because not only does it include the video, but it also includes listening to every bit of the audio, because a lot of personal identifying information or protected information is broadcast. We are constantly working with Axon in those endeavors, and so are multiple large agencies across the country. But at this point, the technology's just not there to meet our needs, where we still don't have to have an individual go through frame by frame of countless hours of video.
Okay. Well, with the changes of like AI and other technologies, hopefully that becomes a quicker piece that we, I know we spend a lot of time, staff hours and a lot of that extra work, and hopefully Axon, as a major client and other municipalities, can improve their service on that end, so. And then my second question, so what do we do with the current stock of the TASERS that we do have? Is Axon taking those and us getting these new ones? Or what's the status of the current stock that we do have?
Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for the question. Essentially, with the, with this program, it looks like a buyback. The TASER 7 energy weapons will go back to Axon, and they'll replace them with the TASER 10s.
Do we get like a reimbursement, or do we get some sort of credit, or what?
There's, Vice Mayor, there's no, with the Axon contract, different items are structured or priced differently. With the energy weapons, essentially, that total cost gets paid off over the duration of the contract. So in this instance, we're actually, though we're giving them back to them, there is, we will still ultimately owe them a few dollars in that agreement that roll into the upcoming contract.
Okay, so we have kind of a payment plan per se, and we still owe a cost there, so they would apply it to these new orders? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Summers?
I have a question for our city attorney and related to the live video feed. I mean, we get public requests for information for records and photos, those type of files, those types of things. Has there been any public record requests for access to live video feed? Or is there a state statute that would prohibit that?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Summers, I don't know if we've gotten a request for that. I'd have to check into it. And I don't know if there's a specific state statute that just deals with live feeds, so I'd have to look into that for you.
It might be, because this technology is going to improve for the betterment of the community and for our officers, but I don't think it's a great idea to have access to live feed. And we might want to look into that, and there isn't a statute. We might want to have some discussions with our state legislators on.
Council? Yeah. Answer that question for you. There isn't a current statute that specifically rates to the live streaming. However, it would fall under the current public records statutes, which require redaction, you know, according to the law, so.
Okay.
Not be able to provide live access to those videos, any different than we could provide the video the next day of something that occurred. So that really doesn't change operationally how the public records requests would work.
Okay, I just, when I heard that, I was a little concerned that we might start getting requests for that. And we do need to be open with the public and allow access to records, but there's a safety aspect to this, making sure we don't identify victims, identify officers unnecessarily. And just when I heard that, I became a little bit concerned. And then for the price, is a lot of this price related to the data storage of this material?
Councilmembers?
Versus the actual cost of the devices?
Councilmember Summers, thank you for the question. It's all, it's a bundled package with Axon for the most part. So for the, for every body camera that we're purchasing, it is packaged with a TASER. It's packaged with backend storage. It's packaged with some of the other software that's coming. Then we do a little bit of an à la carte, so that we have a few more TASERS than we do body cameras. So it's all kind of bundled together in.
And hard to separate out?
No, sir.
It's, it's one package. It's not unlike buying one of some of the new vehicles that have cameras on there and data storage. It's all part of the price, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's interesting, because I do think it is impacting the cost of services. So when folks wonder, hey, why is it so expensive? Well, there are a lot of new standards that hit. There's new technologies that provide a great benefit. And, you know, the cost to outfit an officer these days is more than it was 10 years ago, more than it was 30 years ago. But the technology, we hope, will solve more crimes and save more lives. So thank you for the presentation.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember, go forth.
Yeah, I did, I just wanted to follow up on your question, which I thought was a good one, about the replacement. And what you're saying is we will continue, we, there'll be a period of time where we continue to pay under the previous agreement, even though we're using the new equipment? Is that what you said? I just want clarification on that.
It's just a conversion.
Yeah, Councilmember, the new contract will go into effect July 1st, and we'll just start paying on the new agreement. What happens is we're not, we, next year would be year four of a five-year current agreement. We are terminating that agreement early to move into the new agreement. And so there's a few costs that kind of get rolled forward into that new agreement, specifically the energy weapons, but we won't have both agreements at the same time.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
All right, hearing that, I thank you. Any other questions? We have a couple more presentations here, but if not, we'll start with the presentations that we have for our study session. Item 2A is a presentation and discussion on the Visit Mesa agreements. We have staff, Mike?
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of council. Today, I'd like to introduce you to the updated agreement between the City of Mesa and Visit Mesa. But I'd first like to welcome our visitors from Visit Mesa. On the Zoom call, we have the Chairman of the Visit Mesa Board, Mr. Carl Grubb. In the audience, we have Mr. Dennis Kavanaugh, a member of the Visit Mesa Board. And we also have the President and CEO, Mr. Mark Garcia, and several of his staff members from Visit Mesa here today. Currently, City of Mesa has a contract with Visit Mesa for the promotion of tourism and destination marketing for the City of Mesa. The current agreement expires at the end of this month, and so we've been working with the team at Visit Mesa to come up with an updated agreement. And today, I'd like to highlight some of the updates to the agreement, some of the highlights. First, the updated agreement requires the, three positions to be members of the board, Visit Mesa Board. The first one is the City's Parking Rec Director. The second one is the City's Economic Development Director. And the third is DMA, or Downtown Mesa Association's Executive Director, to be a part of the Visit Mesa Board. The updated agreement also creates an additional position on the Executive Committee, which the City Manager selects. The updated agreement also introduces a process which formalizes the support from Visit Mesa to DMA and the special events in downtown. The agreement also limits marketing and promotion to activities programs within the city limits of Mesa. There are some exclusions for statewide and regional activities that benefit the City of Mesa. Those activities and programs have to be approved by the City Mesa team. The agreement also requires open meeting practices for Executive, Visit Mesa Executive Committee and Visit Mesa Board meetings, as well as posting of the agenda. And finally, we currently are in contract with an independent consultant, Coraggio Group, and they are working with Visit Mesa to look at their governing practices and policies. They are scheduled to have a final presentation and report in October with recommended, if there are any recommended changes. This updated agreement will require Visit Mesa to incorporate those changes, those recommended changes in the future. So with that, the Visit Mesa, this Visit Mesa updated agreement has been approved by the Visit Mesa Board in May 10th. Council, we would ask council to consider this agreement in June 10th or June 17th of this year. And if council approves this agreement, it'll be effective July 1st of this year. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments?
All right, questions? Councilmember Freeman?
So on slide two, or three, Mike, you talked about the board itself, the Visit Mesa Board. And so from what I'm gathering is currently we have two board members. Currently, we're adding an additional third board member.
Uh, yeah.
And then as well as the DMA representative?
So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that's correct, in a way where we're going to add the DMA Executive Director to the board. We're also going to add a position to the Executive Committee, which we didn't have in the past. Currently, we have two members of the board from the city staff.
Okay, and how many board members are there on the Visit Mesa Board?
I think I'd have to ask Mr. Garcia, how many?
Currently, 30.
30.
30, okay. Thank you, Mark. My other question was, when you talked about the contract, when it's approved, how long is that contract for? You didn't say that.
Thank you for bringing that up, I apologize. This updated agreement is for one year, so as opposed to in the past, we came to council four years ago for the last agreement, so this one is for one year.
And then after that, would there be a multi-year contract, or is this year-to-year?
It, no.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Freeman. Obviously, we needed to do just a one-year this time because we still have the Coraggio Group doing the work. So we'll get their feedback and incorporate that. And I think we'll make an assessment and come back to council when we, at the end of the year, and decide how, what that term will look like. I don't think we've committed to any length of this time.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that the contract's appropriate for the timeframe to meet the obligations that you two have agreed on, and so moving forward. So that, I just, I didn't hear how long that contract was.
Right, and I think it's to be determined.
Okay. And so both parties have agreed to that?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, their board approved this updated agreement in May 10th.
Okay.
There are no extensions, it's just a one-year deal.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Spilsbury?
Did you say who was part of the Mesa Destination Team?
I didn't, I apologize. It's Mr. Brady, myself, and Andrea from the City Manager's Office. We also have Jay O'Donnell, who's a member of the board, and also the member of the Mesa Destination Team, along with Andrea from City Mesa Parks.
Okay, so that was going to be my question, if, since the city is, since the Destination Mesa Team is working with staff, are they the ones that are also on the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They're included.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, we have Councilmember Duff?
Yeah, I have a few questions to tack on to Julie's comment. I assume the Councilmember continues a seat. Councilmember Summers is currently a member, right?
That's correct, yes, that's correct.
Sustained, okay. On the limiting, the limit marketing, to limit marketing. I know Visit Mesa also does, takes in revenue and does marketing in conjunction with Mesa for, I think, Queen Creek and Gilbert, correct me if I'm wrong. So on the limited market, is that just a separation of Mesa funds being used from Mesa? I mean, or is it, Visit Mesa will only promote Visit Mesa and will drop these, you know,
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Partner organizations?
Councilmember Duff, we really wanted to focus on promoting Mesa and tourism, but we do recognize that they do have, there are activities, regional activities and statewide activities that benefit Mesa as well. And that's why we wanted to provide that exception for Visit Mesa. Whenever those are, whenever there are those programs or activities, they could bring them to us and justify the benefit for Mesa, and we would approve those.
I believe they were, Visit Mesa receives revenues to promote the region, including Queen Creek and Gilbert. So then they would discontinue their agreements with Queen Creek and Gilbert to bring them into a regional marketing campaign? Is that correct?
Currently, we are, actually, Mr. Garcia has provided us the list of their current agreements, and we're going to review that as staff. And if we have any questions, we'll, we'll talk with Mr. Garcia as well.
I've talked to Queen Creek. I think there, my understanding from Queen Creek is eventually they will be withdrawing from Visit Mesa's board.
Okay. So this agreement is asking or requiring them to drop any other related?
We need to look at it. You know, that we, the City of Mesa contributes over four.
Four million.
Four million dollars a year. And we're concerned about, there's been some comments about why some of the promotions are promoting restaurants in other adjacent communities or other activities. And so we just want to make sure, the comment was, these are Mesa funds, they should be promoting Mesa businesses. So that's where we're starting from. So we'll, we'll work through that conversation that, I think the idea is that we want to make sure that the money generated in Mesa is serving Mesa.
Right.
I, you know, if, we'll have to work through if there's a specific, you know, initiative with a specific community, and as long as, you know, what they're paying is what they're getting, and it doesn't have dollars coming from Mesa, I think we could have that conversation. But right now, we need to reset the conversation about how the money's being used. And we want to make sure it's being focused in Mesa.
So therefore, I would assume there isn't a separation of revenues and expenditures of accounting? Okay. Anyway, I just want to understand how that was going to work in the new agreement. So it's still under review?
Yeah. We're just making it clear that right now, our expectation is that it supports Mesa.
Mesa dollars support Mesa events. Okay. Also, around the downtown marketing, I know Visit Mesa has done some events and promotions and advertising. And then DMA, Downtown Mesa, does their own. And it's a little confusing because we have, if we're going to brand downtown, there has to be a coordinated or collaborative effort in making sure that works together and doesn't have, anyway, if you're a brand, if you're branding an area, you need to have a coordinated effort and, and what you're doing and how you're doing it and what that appears.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, great point. And this agreement also stipulates a monthly meeting between Visit Mesa and DMA.
So Visit Mesa will continue marketing downtown Mesa?
Yeah, so it, part of the agreement as well creates this formalized process where Mr. Garcia and Terry from DMA get together and come up with an agreed-upon plan for this upcoming year.
Okay. All right. So there, it does require collaboration?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Freeman?
And I just want to thank everybody for working together on this. I know it's difficult, but, you know, the timing is right and to move forward. So again, thank you, everybody. I know settling this, we're not completely done yet, but another year, we'll know where we're going to stand.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Summers, Councilmember, go forth.
I do have some questions and comments.
Okay.
First, I, I would like to point out what Mr. Brady had said, that there's $4 million in fed tax revenues, that the City of Mesa is contributing to an effort specifically toward bringing in additional tourism to the city. The hope is to generate even more money. It might not be taxes from us locally. It's a tax, it's a bed tax, but we still have a fiduciary responsibility to our constituents to make sure that that tax money is spent appropriately and wisely and achieves the goals that we have set for it. So this interim step toward better fiscal responsibility is absolutely essential. I'm extremely pleased that we have added the DMA. That was a partner that should have been on the board a very long time ago. I don't know, maybe they were on for a while, then came off. There, there's always a turnover in a board. But having a representative from DMA is essential, given all the events that we are trying to build in our downtown. What I would like to add to that, however, is that we shouldn't just focus on downtown. There are other areas within the city. I'm thinking specifically of AAG, Arizona Athletic Grounds, in my district that Vice Mayor Heredia travels to frequently, as we heard in a previous presentation. That could really benefit from representation on the board. They have some new ownership there. Perhaps we would seek that out. I also think it's important to have all of our economic development partners involved. There was a resignation from the board from the Mesa Chamber of Commerce. Moving forward, I think we should have a representative from the Mesa Chamber of Commerce. It might not be the President and CEO of that organization, but her designee could be a very valuable partner with that. We need to build coalitions and partnerships with all of our economic development assets to focus on this very important topic. Hopefully, moving forward to Councilmember Duff's point, is we need to have a better sense of how the revenues are moving within that organization, particularly the public revenues. So there's, there's sales tax dollars, but there are also private dollars that come from the industry itself. Knowing with what expenditures are coming out of which bucket is something that we right now don't have the capacity for. So adding something like that in, and not in this agreement, because we just don't have the, the information available yet, that's what the consultant is being hired for. But considering that as, as we move forward for a future agreement is critical to me. Having the ability to audit the public side of those dollars, to see how they're being funded, is absolutely critical for the public trust. Finally, for Mr. Brady, I really appreciate all the work your office did on this. Having a member of your senior staff involved at, at the executive level on this board is going to be very important for, for all of the reasons that I have stated previously. I would like to suggest that someone with financial or auditing experience be the one that's appointed, but that is completely your purview. That's just my suggestion. So I guess I had more pontificating than I did questions. So that's it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Summers. Councilmember, go forth.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Is the Mesa, is the Destination Mesa Team new to this agreement? Or was that, did, did that exist prior?
Councilmember, go forth. Thank you for that question. It existed prior. We set that up, I don't know, I believe it was either two, last year, two years ago?
Beginning of last year.
And so we've set that up, and so it's, it's maintaining that Destination Marketing Team or Destination Mesa Team, excuse me.
Okay. And then the two board members, the Parks and Rec and the Economic Development Director, those existed prior as well?
Yes.
Those two board positions? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then the limited voting rights, is that new?
The limited voting, oh, yes, that is new. Just kind of a best practice we wanted to follow to avoid any conflict of interest, to limit voting rights to, to non-employees.
How many board members are employed by Visit Mesa?
That's a good question. Yeah. So we just have one on the board, on Visit Mesa Board.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you for that. That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Appreciate, I appreciate the work on this. I know it's taken conversations. And I do, I do want to highlight some of the synergies and maybe maintaining, keeping the synergies going on, you know, adding from Councilmember Summers' comment around other areas of the city, i.e. like the Asian District selfishly, right? The Asian District where Visit Mesa has helped in the promotion of, you know, our murals and, and other work there. So keeping those synergies going. We got other opportunities like the Fiesta Mall, what, what happens there, Falcon Field, the, the tech corridor out there in the east side, and various other, other opportunities that I think we have in, in the city. But I also want to comment on, you know, identifying regional assets, right? Like Salt River, right? I know Visit Mesa promotes that. I think it helps Mesa. And so just making sure that we, those regional assets, that, you know, unfortunately Mesa doesn't have all the amenities, I would say, still, that maybe a tourist would want to come here. But adding regional assets and then targeting to stay and shop and, and, and be in the city limits to, 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 as a travel here. I think there's ways to do that with the marketing and kind of facilitation of those, those kind of outreach pieces, right? So, but appreciate the, the work on this from staff and Visit Mesa and the board, and look forward to the continued relationship, so.
Spring training games, too.
Spring training, yep, yep.
That's a big one.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike. And can we take just a couple, maybe a five-minute break real quick?
Yeah, we're almost there.
We'll, we'll start with item 2B, a presentation from the IDEA Museum Outdoor Atrium by Mr. Richard Perrison, so. All right. I think we're all back here. We'll get started with item 2B. It's a presentation and discussion on the generous donation and naming of the IDEA Museum Outdoor Atrium. So we have Mr. Richard Perrison, so, Jr. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. I am here on behalf of the Department of Arts and Culture to discuss for your direction and guidance. We have a naming rights opportunity as part of the IDEA Museum's Capital Experience Campaign that we would like to share with you some very good news. We have a donor, Dr. Ruth Tan Lim, who has committed to $250,000 in a capital campaign gift for the naming rights of our outdoor atrium. This gift is comprised as a five-year pledge of $25,000 per year, over five years, and then also a planned giving legacy bequest upon her death. So the $250,000 capital campaign gift will help to support the renovation that is currently going on at the IDEA Museum. The museum's outdoor atrium would be named for her and her deceased husband. The contract and addendum that you have as part of your package has been approved by the CAO for content, for form, and has been approved by my office for content. The staff recommendation is that in session, you approve the naming opportunity as part of our capital campaign. Just to give you a sense of the atrium as it currently exists, the blue highlighted area is the outdoor atrium as it is currently on the footprint. We will have a number of vibrant outdoor murals and exhibitions that will be possible in this outdoor atrium after the renovation. We plan year-round usability with misting and shaded and cooled areas in the atrium, which is not able to do now. And currently, we'll have some grading improvements to avoid flooded plains inside the atrium now. We consider it sometimes a pool if it rains too, if it rains too heavy, so we're excited. A small, a small waiting pool. And we will have a number of interactive outdoor experiences, and the mural that's currently there is in the photo. Just to give you a sense of the entire proximity of the capital campaign, our goal is 202.5 million dollars, and right now, we are at about 1.5 million. And we're hoping that with the additional push to the close, we will get to the end of our capital campaign goal. But however, just yesterday, we received a pledge notification of an additional $125,000 gift, which brings us up from 60,000 to 65, 60% to 65%. So we're very excited about that. So we present that to you for your consideration and approval on staff recommendation.
Jared is in a construction meeting as the, as the envoy for Arts and Culture to the
project. He's meeting with engineering on the construction project.
All right. Any questions or comments on this? Councilmember Duff?
Yeah, a couple. So on the 1.5 and the 2.5, is the 250 included in that?
It is. The $125,000 gift that was just pledged last night is not included. That does bring it to 65%.
Okay. Wonderful. I think this is great. I remember serving on the board with Dr. Ruth Tan Lim. And please convey my congratulations and thank you to Jared for the work that he has done over the years in order to secure this. Thank you.
I will. Yeah, and I will comment too. You know, I've had a pleasure to work with Dr. Lim, and she's a force of nature, I would say. Definitely, yeah, very, she hosts Nonviolence Week in October at MCC, Mesa Community College, and, and really gives back to the community quite a bit for many years. And so really appreciate the, the donation and, and her work that she does in the community here, so. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Freeman?
I'd just share that, you know, I've had a lot of interaction with her and traveled on the sister cities, and so she's very philanthropic and part of her legacy. And she mentioned to me, you know, I don't have any children, this is part of my legacy. I want to promote children, and culture is one of her favorite things to do. So kudos to her for doing this and thinking to the future when she's not with us. And, you know, she says, well, when I die, I guess the bequeath of the 125,000, that's part of her thinking ahead, so we'll have to kind of chider about that. Maybe you don't have to leave so soon.
We hope that they, the remainder of that 125,000 doesn't come for quite a while.
Exactly.
All right. Councilmember Summers or Councilmember, go forth?
I love it. Thank you.
Other than a thank you, a big thank you. I do not know her, but obviously, a big thank you for her generosity.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We'll move forward with item 2C is a presentation on the city's proposed trap-neuter return program for feral cats. So this is a, an important topic that, uh... Well, if you recall, when we were wrapping up the budget, this was one of the items accounted. And we, so this has been in the budget, but we didn't have a chance to really talk about the program. So this is kind of a little backwards here, but...
We could ask them.
Yeah. Yes.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Shannon Gross, Animal Control Supervisor. Today, I have with me Miguel Hernandez. He's our lead animal control officer. We're going to be talking to you about a trap-neuter and return program for the City of Mesa.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm the lead animal control officer, Miguel Hernandez. And as you already heard, what is TNR program and what does it stand for? So TNR is a trap-neuter and return. And what that entails is that the participant will trap the cat, will then take it to a vet facility to have it spayed or neutered, and then will, that participant will return the cat back to the neighborhood in the colony where that cat came from. This will be beneficial for the communities as it will reduce the cat population, and it will also help the overall health of the neighborhood. What have we done so far? We have researched other cities and their TNR programs in order to prepare for our program, for the city's program that we're building up. We've counted the number of neighborhoods that we have here in the City of Mesa. We've conducted outreach to veterinary facilities and their clinics to see who is willing to participate in this program. And based on that research, we come up with a program outline for the City of Mesa and its estimated cost.
So along with everything that Miguel mentioned, we also looked at our population in Mesa of over half a million people. We looked at our number of traditional neighborhoods, and then we took into consideration the number of phone calls or field contacts that we get annually regarding feral cats. With all of this together, we came up with this outline for the program. We will first start with out... We will first start with outreach to neighborhoods to see who wants to participate and become a T N R neighborhood, then when we get those neighborhoods established, we will have briefings to go over guidelines, best practices, and what's required to be a T N R neighborhood within the city of Mesa, then we go to all the forms and the legal waivers that they're required to comply with to become a T N R neighborhood. Each neighborhood that works with us will receive some starter traps, and then when they begin the trapping and they have some cats ready for surgeries, they will be provided with veterinary vouchers. This program outline, all of what we just mentioned, comes to about $347,000 a year, with a one-time startup cost of $45,000, our first budget year being $392,000. We are currently recruiting for the two full-time employees that we need, once we get them on and board and hired, we're going to go through the outline and look at the process again, and we'll be able to have a startup date at that time. Questions?
If a resident in a neighborhood is interested, maybe, just kind of currently planned, what does that look like?
So if we get a neighborhood that's interested, we are going to ask for a neighborhood lead, kind of like with the police, they have block watch captains, things like that, so we'll work directly with that neighborhood lead, as well as the others in the neighborhood that want to participate, we will supply them with traps, and then the veterinary requirement, the vet says, we want to do this every other Wednesday, then we'll make sure that they know every other Wednesday we're using this vet, every Saturday we're using this vet, and then we'll direct them with the vouchers and then work with the veterinarians to make sure we have everything in line.
And then once that feral cat's been treated, then we bring the cat, the neighbor goes and picks up the cat and brings it back to the...
Correct, the people that are doing, in the neighborhoods that are doing the trapping and then taking them to the vet's, they will be responsible for returning them to the same neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you, Shannon, for, thank you, Vice Mayor, you know, in working through this process, I think it's essential to reach out to the neighborhoods, because you've identified neighborhoods that have a feral cat issue, and they continue to do that, and there's no really helps with the city, because we've said, well, we don't do that, but now we have a program, and I think that's essential. I know that you've reached out to some of the veterinarians, because I put you in contact with them, and I think you got some good feedback from them, and how to identify their services to help collaborate with the neighborhoods, get the spay or neuter done, and then return the cat back to the neighborhood, and then I think that's a health question, you know, they can check the cat, make sure it's healthy enough to return back to the neighborhood, because maybe it cannot and needs some medical services. So I think overall, it's a cost savings to the neighborhood, because they have no way, I mean, Maricopa County Animal Control does not accept cats here in Mesa.
Correct.
And even if they did, it's like $100. I don't know who accepts cats, unless, does anybody accept cats in Maricopa County Animal Control?
We're not aware of any facilities that...
Okay, well, there you go. We're going to be, what other communities, is there any other municipalities that do T N R, like Tempe has a kind of a semi...
Tempe, yeah, Tempe has a program, Gilbert is beginning a program, Chandler has a program, and Glendale has a program.
So you brought up the factor so large as a city, and I think having veterinarian services spread out through the city to help identify, like, maybe, I know there's some in Dobson Ranch, a friend of mine, my son-in-law's a veterinarian, so I consulted him, who consulted his brother and others, but there's some in Dobson Ranch, there's some in Greenfield in Maine, and other places that you can help identify veterinarian hospitals to help do the services, is that something they're going to do or look at, or how, are they going to be given a voucher that they could go to their veterinarian?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, what we're looking at is having a contract with the veterinarians, even if it's a one-page contract on the scope of work and the cost, and then we will outline how we're going to make sure we get the correct people to the correct veterinarian. We have done outreach to veterinarians out in East Mesa, Central Mesa, and as well as West Mesa, and we have a couple meetings coming up with those veterinarians.
Good, work in progress.
Councilmember Spillsbury?
How, this is maybe a dumb question, but how do, like, someone's cat that's a pet, how does the, how do, well, I don't even know how to ask my question, how does a feral cat versus a regular pet that's roaming the neighborhood stay out of the cage?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, it's, I understand what you're asking, it's very difficult, because cats are allowed to roam, and there are people that let their own pet cats roam, so the only way to know the difference would be if a collar, or if the cat is a feral cat and has already been altered, they will tip the ear.
Oh.
So...
Hypothetically, though, there's going to be cats that are...
You should be spaying and neutering your own cats, though.
But I mean, they will be potentially trapped, like, a neighborhood cat will get trapped, and then hopefully the people will recognize that it's a neighbor cat or something instead of a feral cat?
Hopefully, but if your cat is not spayed or neutered, you're getting a free surgery, so.
Okay, I mean, so if it doesn't have a collar or any identification...
It's going to be hard to know.
There's no way to know.
It'll get taken in, it'll get spayed and neutered, so maybe people will want this, their cat to get captured, so they don't have to pay for it? I don't know, I'm just thinking, we have a lot of cats roaming my neighborhood, but I think they're all people's pets, I don't think they're feral.
My experience with ferals is it, I can tell which ones, I pretty much know the neighborhood, the neighbor's cats, and they look healthy, and the feral ones do not look healthy, they can, you can tell they've been, you know, just living on the streets and don't have anybody looking after them, and hopefully pet owners are chipping their animals, and a vet would scan before they performed any surgery, in addition, looking for, you know, the markings if they were, so I think there's a lot of ways to really minimize that opportunity, and just because I've been a cat owner all my life, my cats will go to the next neighbor on either side, but that is their territory, they don't roam any further. When they're young, maybe they go across the street, and I would just tell the neighbor, these are my cats, you know, you might see them, they're my cats, if there's any issues, let me know. But they do not roam outside of a very tight area, so hopefully you know your neighbor's cats, or...
Get to know your neighbor's cats.
Well, you know, you know, you know your neighbor's dogs or whatever, if they get out, you're like, oh, they're out, I better get them, you know, so hopefully we have a little communication within, having a neighborhood program, that we get to know our neighbors and work on the problem together, and identify, you know, any existing cats in the neighborhood that are...
I think that's why we're doing it as a neighborhood group, right, because the whole idea, they would have that familiarity, and they're talking to each other, right, at the same time.
You're not just putting them out random places across the city that are...
Right, so I assume, oh, are you finished? I just started all my questions, okay, so is there any limit on the vouchers that we're placing, because I'm aware of, like, neighborhoods have like 50 in a colony, you know?
Well, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, right now, we're not putting a limit on it, we need to see what capacity each vet in each area can handle, the budget, what we came up with was, I'm looking at the $180,000, it works at 2,400 cats a year. When we took that number, because Tempe being just about a third of our size, they're doing 1,500 a year, is what Tempe's doing right now.
Initial years might be much heavier than subsequent, so I assume the city of Mesa will be paying the vets directly?
Correct.
Which is, yeah, that's the best way, and then we're providing training when they pick up the traps?
Yes.
How to trap safely?
Yes, we will have briefings before we let any neighborhood begin trapping.
Okay, great, and so is this replacing the current program, we just have a lending program, so it's really just kind of taking the same program and making it more robust and rounded out?
Yes.
With all the other services?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and I assume you'll be working with our neighborhood service, our community services?
Yes, we're going to be working with community engagement, yes.
Yeah, because they know a lot of people in the neighborhood to get introduced, and maybe they could even incorporate an introduction to the program and one of their programs or something like that.
Well, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we are looking at beginning the process to contact the neighborhoods with an online forum, which is what we did in 2021, when we looked at doing the trap lending program, that's what we started with.
Great, great, thank you very much for your work on this, I know you've done a lot of work in a very short amount of time, and I really love that you have made a program that I think it will be effective for our residents, and I look forward to making a difference in the neighborhoods, thanks.
Any other questions? I do have two items where, piggybacking to Councilmember Duff's question on, is there any additional costs that, you know, the neighborhoods or the folks were incurred? I know the problem with the current program, you know, it was a little bit costly and just, is there additional costs that they had to do, to do this program?
Vice Mayor, I heard of the only cost to them would be their time?
Their time, yeah.
And the food to put in the traps to bait them.
Okay, and then the other question around outreach, I think maybe at the beginning, if there's like a small ad budget to go on Next Door, or some of the other tools to promote, just, you know, signs that you mentioned, I know the ear clipping, or, you know, if they have a tag, you know, just making sure people are aware of some of those pieces, if they're neighbor's cats, or this program exists, right, you know, starting off maybe with some sort of outreach plan that we can supplement with the forum and the things that you're already doing to keep on promoting initially this program.
That's what our plan is in the outline, we haven't determined exactly, but we will reach out on the community engagement newsletters, we're looking at doing videos for our briefings, things like that.
Perfect, perfect, okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Summers, Councilmember Goldthorpe, any questions?
Vice Mayor, I think you covered it well, I was going to ask the same thing about community outreach, perhaps a one-page infographic with the basic details on who to contact, so that we can push that out on various social media pages. Also, I've only had one cat issue, colony issue here in the past year and a half, and I want to thank staff for addressing that, because it was very difficult, and it turned out to be, it wasn't just a cat colony, it was a hoarding situation, so on the question with the size of these colonies, where what was mentioned of 50 cats, is there going to be a different pathway for, still for a colony versus a hoarding situation?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Summers, a hoarding situation depending on what, I don't want to say steps, but depending on the, do you have a better word than I do? Depending on the extent.
It's a different process, if we go out there and investigate and discover that this is actually a hoarding condition, there's a different set of steps for that?
Yes, because they're in, when it's hoarding, they're inside the home, and depending on the extent of the hoarding, you could start leaning into an animal cruelty investigation, so each one of those situations are looked at step by step and individually.
Okay, and both those steps remain separate, this is in addition for something that's just more of a neighborhood nuisance?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Actually, we piggyback on that point, is there, say, if a neighborhood is just overrun and it's just too much for the lead there, are, with the two staff members, are we able to help support if there's a huge colony in one of these areas? Is that, is that something that we've considered? Because this seems kind of just, in general, maybe several cats, and that's manageable, but if there's a huge colonies where we've encountered some of these areas, there's just like a lot of cats, are we able to support them like we've done in the past, I think?
Vice Mayor, we, right now, the intent is not to have us handling any of the animals, and I think we would look at that case by case when we speak to the neighborhoods to find out how many they are actually looking at wanting to have altered.
Okay, but I know we, like, I, like, we've assisted, you know, in some of these, like, large colonies that happen, in working with you all in the past to help remedy the situation with a trap and neuter program, right, so are we still, like, if it's, it's a big colony, are we still willing to help supporting that in and figuring out what we can do?
So in the past, in years back, that assistance, we were directing people to the Animal Defense League of Arizona, the ADLA, and they were the ones that were doing the outreach in the neighborhood. We were not doing that, we were just making the connection with the ADLA.
Okay, but there, so there will be some support if there is, I guess it's case by case, right, if a case is humongous, where like one neighborhood can't handle this, right, based on our program?
Yeah, definitely.
We're able to coordinate that piece.
If we see something that is becoming too large, and people are saying, I can't handle this on my own, then we are going to look at ways that we can assist them.
Perfect, all right.
I think the issue is, you just don't want to have a trapped animal, you need to have somebody who's checking on the traps.
Sure.
Every regularly, you just don't want to trap an animal, wait days before you...
Yeah, for sure. Councilmember Spillsbury?
It's just made me think, I remember a commercial shopping center near me that had a cat problem, there were just always cats everywhere, like, could someone get one of these and go put one there, or do they have to keep them in their neighborhood?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, the strip malls private property, are considered private property businesses, so there would have to be communication with that business, depending on what neighborhood it's in, if you have a neighborhood that feels their problem is because of that community at that strip mall or that commercial location, then we would have to communicate with the business owner as well as that neighborhood, because stepping on someone else's property could be considered trespassing, and we don't want to go over any legal boundaries.
So like, back behind a building, you'd have to, like, talk to the property owner, not just the business owner properly, which would be hard to find the property owner, okay, so there are limitations on where they should be putting these?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? Thank you, thank you for the presentation. All right, next item is, item two D is to take action on appointments to various boards and committees, is there a motion to approve, motion by Councilmember Freeman, second by Councilmember Spillsbury, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes. Item three is to acknowledge, receive a board minute, meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve, Councilmember Spillsbury, second by Councilmember Duff, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Item number four is the next, is a list of current events and conferences attended, councilmembers, do you have anything to share? Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, thank you for letting me go first, Julie. Last Thursday, I got to attend a large Lehigh Crossings Community Event, they have a large party there in the springtime, it's great to see their neighborhood and great community out there. I was invited over to CCS, over their business, and got to play some ping pong there with staff and have lunch and talk about the city, all we're doing at the city, and also the firefighter memorial, I got to talk about that. And then Tuesday, Councilmember Duff and I were at the Mesa Business Builder presentation, that was a good time, and appreciated J. O'Donald and her team, they're not, the team's not here, but regardless, it was a great turnout, and appreciated the presenter as well. And then yesterday, we had at the advisory board and committee breakfast, that was also brand new, and thank you to the mayor and Holly for putting that on, and your team, that was pretty good turnout, and everything else she did. So, yeah, so I think I covered a lot for the ladies for once, instead of them covering for me.
You're always welcome to, Mark.
All right.
I will add on.
Councilmember Duff?
Because on the Mesa Business Builder event, the author or presenter was Tim Kogle, and I apologize if I messed up his last name, but he's a New York Times and Wall Street bestseller, for the book, The Exceptional Presenter, in which, I don't know if you got your copy, but I got my copy, I got it signed, but it was fascinating, it was such a great presentation, and how body language, and I'm thinking about how body language and motions that you use are very much necessary for effective communication, yeah, he had the T-Rex thing, so sometimes people stand in front of people, and they said... said, well, you know, there's a lot of things that we do without thinking about it, which affects our receptiveness to the audience. So, and I know yesterday, when I was at the appreciation breakfast for our advisory boards, I, the way I was standing, and I'm like, oh, this is a fig leaf stand. No, no, that's not, it's kind of, like, no, I want us to be more open and it breaks, I don't know. It's fascinating, but thank you, Mesa Business Builder, for speaking to the small businesses about that. And, and it's good for campaigning, too, councilmembers who are, effective communication. And for this councilmember as well. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Spilsbury? Nothing? All right. Councilmember Summers, Councilmember Goldthorpe?
Jen, did you, did you mention the event that we attended, most of the council attended it for appreciation for volunteer store boards?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mark mentioned it, but thank you for the extra.
A little bit, okay.
We do appreciate our advisory boards, and that was yesterday morning. Thank you.
Fantastic. Yeah, Mark kept correcting my posture up on the stand there from, from what he learned.
All right. Councilmember Goldthorpe?
No, nothing more to add, other than the breakfast was, was great. Holly did a fantastic job, and I think everybody appreciated being appreciated.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you. Mr. Brady, schedule future meetings?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this week from today, the 13th, the council will be, I believe, at NLC, so that meeting has been canceled. The next meeting of the council will be Monday, June 17th, at 5:15, study session, followed by council meeting at 5:45. And again, we will not be meeting on June 20th either for study session. The next study session will be June 27th. And just a reminder to everyone, for the next five months till, from this Monday till the opening of the new city hall, the entrance into Municipal Plaza will be changed, so you'll be essentially coming in the side door like you would be going into the, we call it Room 170 on the side, so, so we can start the renovations there on the, where the security desk is. You'll still be able to get to the elevator, but you'll have to come in through 170 and come in that way. So that will change as of Monday. So, thank you.
Or take the stairs.
Or take the stairs.
That'd be a little rough sound for, so. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Freeman, second by Councilmember Duff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.